I'm from Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 21st, 2009. And the first thing that we are doing this evening is our swearing-in ceremony. And we are lucky enough to have Municipal Judge, Judge Grimm, with us tonight. And he is the first that is going to be sworn in by our state representative, Debbie Phillips. Please come down front. After that, then the judge will be swearing in the members of council.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
Will administer justice without respect to persons
Will administer justice without respect to persons
And will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform
And will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform
All of the duties incumbent upon me
All of the duties incumbent upon me
As judge of Athens County Municipal Court
As judge of Athens County Municipal Court
During the term January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2015
During the term January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2015
According to the best of my ability and understanding
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next, we have William Baez. Repeat after me. I, William Baez,
I, William Baez,
as president of Athens City Council
As president of Athens City Council
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm
To support the Constitution of the United States
To support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And to faithfully discharge
And to faithfully discharge
The duties of the office to which I have been elected
The duties of the office to which I have been elected
For the term January 1, 2010
For the term January 1, 2010
Through December 31, 2011
To the -- I'm sorry.
Through December 31
Through December 31, 2011. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next is Alahu Ghazni. Repeat after me. I, Alahu Ghazni
I, Alahu Ghazni
As a member of Athens City Council
As a member of Athens City Council
At large representative
At large representative
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm
To support the Constitution of the United States
To support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And to faithfully discharge the duties of the office
And to faithfully discharge the duties of the office
To which I have been elected
To which I have been elected
For the term January 1, 2010
For the term January 1, 2010
To December 31, 2011
To December 31, 2011.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Christine Nysland. I, Christine Nysland
I, Christine Nysland
As a member of Athens City Council
As a member of Athens City Council
At large representative
At large representative
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm
Support the Constitution of the United States
To support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And to faithfully discharge
And to faithfully discharge
The duties of the office
The duties of the office
To which I have been elected
To which I have been elected
For the term January 1, 2010
For the term January 1, 2010
To December 31, 2011
To December 31, 2011.
Congratulations. Jim Sands. I, Jim Sands
I, Jim Sands
As a member of Athens City Council
As a member of Athens City Council
At large representative
At large representative
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm
To support the Constitution of the United States
To support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And to faithfully discharge the duties
And to faithfully discharge the duties
Of the office to which I have been elected
Of the office to which I have been elected
For the term January 1, 2010
For the term January 1, 2010
To December 31, 2011
To December 31, 2011.
You're welcome, Jeff. I, Sherry Kuhn
I, Sherry Kuhn
As a member of Athens City Council
As a member of Athens City Council
Second Ward Representative
Second Ward Representative
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm
To support the Constitution of the United States
To support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And to faithfully discharge
And to faithfully discharge
The duties of the office
The duties of the office
To which I have been elected
To which I have been elected
For the term January 1, 2010
For the term January 1, 2010
To December 31, 2011
To December 31, 2011.
Congratulations. And Nancy.
I, Nancy Bain
I, Nancy Bain
As member of Athens City Council
As member of Athens City Council
Third Ward Representative
Third Ward Representative
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm
To support the Constitution of the United States
To support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio
And to faithfully discharge the duties
And to faithfully discharge the duties
Of the office to which I have been elected
Of the office to which I have been elected
For the term January 1, 2010
For the term January 1, 2010
To December 31, 2011
To December 31, 2011. Am I close on?
Exactly. That is everybody who was here tonight to be sworn in. Thank you very much, all of you, for asking me to be a part of this as an officiant, as someone who ran with you on this ballot, and as a citizen. I'm proud to be a part of this.
Judge, thank you. We're proud to have you there. And I think with the possible exception of myself, everybody did better than Barack Obama on getting sworn in.[511.33][511.33][laughter] It was not, it's called, absolutely not. But it's easy to stammer on these things. You know, we've got a few moments. Well, we don't have to. We've got a few moments, though. Maybe we could give everybody a moment to make a statement if they wish at all. It's kind of a neat time. This is my 10th time, I guess, being sworn in, 10 different terms, finishing up 20 years. Well, now, I'm just going to be number 11, now, wouldn't it? This is when we go from being a candidate to being an elected official. This is when we represent everybody in our ward. Those that supported us and those that didn't, and those in the city that supported us and those that didn't. Nancy, any thoughts you want to share? Let me put you on the spot. You've been around here for, what, 112 years, I think?
That's probably true. I guess I would like to suggest that this council has done very well over the last two years, and we should all take a lot of credit for what has happened. I think there have been -- it's been relatively bad times. We worked with the administration. I don't think we were pushovers by any means. I'm sure that you can all recall times when we had some words, either with each other or with the administration. But overall, I think that today's business, next year's appropriations, suggest that some of our hard work, and I could start with Chris and talk about what she's done on the Transit Committee, and Alahu with Solar and with the Green Fleets, and Jim just being there always with the Finance Committee, and Sherry with her work on safety, and our two missing comrades who do something. I can't remember where you -- oh, yes, that's right. Chris was planning and development, and a very hard campaign, as I remember, and Kent Butler, who's been finding his place in the framework of council. It's been a pleasure. I mean, I've done this so many times, I'm not even going to disclose how many times I've been on council. But what I do know is that this group, like other groups, has its ups and downs, and I think we've done extremely well. I don't think we're very good at sort of blowing our own horn, but we're not -- we're maybe trying to be a little bit better. I think the administration hasn't really been as good at blowing its own horn as it should to show what's been done. So the people on the North Side know about Congress Street, but they don't know about the South Side Water Project. And I, you know, I'm going to try, keep pushing to have them take more credit for what's been done and how well it's gone, because we have done pretty well. I mean, not to say that we couldn't do better, and we'll try this next two years, I guess. But there's certainly some things waging against us, but that's where I'm coming from today.
Why don't we go down the list in terms of seniority, and I'm sure I will get out of --
You said it.
Yeah, we go to the really, really old people first.
Oh, thanks, Bill.
God, Jim, I remember talking you into running for the first time. How many years ago was that?
Yeah, I forgive you for that.[703.41][703.41][laughter] Actually, I look at every swearing-in ceremony as an honor to be here, chosen by the voters of Athens, and I look at it with a tremendous sense of responsibility to remember those voters in everything that we do and work with the members of the administration and the members of council to make all of our lives, as I'm a citizen of Athens, too, and to make all of our lives better and richer for the actions of all of us here in the city building, and the crews who work on the roads and on the water lines and the sewer lines and upon whom we depend and whom I hope we take good care of.
Very good. Thank you. Jim spends an awful lot of time on behalf of the citizens, working through a $30 million budget and making sure that those things come together. And, you know, that's never the kind of thing that makes it into the headlines of the newspaper and doesn't get, you know, people asking you a lot of detailed questions at the farmer's market, but it is one of those things that's -- I was a finance chair for quite a few years. It's not always fun, and it certainly isn't too
Glamorous.
Glamorous? Thank you. But thanks for the work you do with that. I think the three of you are all the same seniority. Is that correct?
Chris is behind by just a couple of weeks. Couple of weeks, yeah.[827.11][827.11][laughter]
Less seniority than the other two. So we'll go to Alahu next. Alahu, you've done a lot of hard work on the Environmental Committee. I didn't think that committee was going to really do the kind of things that it's done, but you've really made a lot of initiatives and did a lot of research on your own and championed a lot of projects through the city.
It's hard to believe, but it's been two years already. Time really does fly, and, you know, just thank you, Bill. But speaking just about the other council members, I think every single council member, even though we're up here as Democrats, we all bring something different to the table that's unique and valuable in moving the city forward on all the issues that we face. There's a lot of challenges. Member Bain mentioned the budget, and I think that is our biggest challenge, probably this past year and this upcoming year, possibly even further. It's been really good working with the administration in the mayor's office. He has a really good team together downstairs, and the fact that council works well with the mayor, I think, is very good for the city in anything that we consider. I think there's a pretty good relationship, even though I think we tend to keep each other in check when we need to. So I guess that's it, other than just a thank you to all the employees of the city that, like was mentioned, do all the day-to-day work to keep the city running.
Let's jump over to Member Kuhn, then, if she's got more time than you do. Sherry.
Well, just let me say that it's been a pleasure working with all the hard-working, dedicated members of council. I'm looking forward to the coming two years, to sort of build upon what I've learned the past two years. And I do want to thank the administration. I have a lot of respect for the administration, and I think we are working, we are working well together. So, thank you.
Chris Nysland.
I'm never impromptu, and don't speak as well as you all do, but it'll be a combination, because I did think a little bit about it today. And, Bill, I'm back to your comment of maybe a week or so ago where you said, you know, it probably takes the first few months, if not the first term, just to learn how things work in city government and work on council. And so I felt like this first partial term since coming in in April of '08, a few months after you all did, was really a time when I learned a lot, hopefully enough, and I have you all to thank for that, because you all helped me along the way immeasurably. Fellow council members, people in the city administration, people in the city staff have just been extremely helpful, and that's been wonderful. And I know we're still facing challenging times. You know, we're still, you know, struggling through state budgets that Debbie's been telling us about, and her work on that, and also how that's going to affect us at the local level, too. We're not through that yet, and the university's going to be going through some, you know, some additional cuts. So we're all going to struggle with it, but I feel like we're going to struggle with it together and come out with, hopefully, some good solutions for the community. And I was thinking, when I thought about it today, I looked down at my calendar that a friend had given me, and it, and there was a quote, be it being, January being the next month, and it said, it was Martin Luther King quote, and it says, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And to me, that meant I need to, you know, to remember in the coming year that, you know, I don't want us to, I don't want to be silent about issues. They might not always be easy ones. They might not always be ones we always agree on, but needing to take a stand on things and work towards the bettering of the community, and just looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Chris, and everyone. I today spoke with Howard Stevens, and that was somebody I grew to respect a lot on city council, when he used to sit where Sherry is sitting now 15 years ago or so. And Howard came over and talked to me for a little while at Rotary, and we were reminiscing about how he being Republican and me Democrat, and he conservative and I liberal, but we always respected each other and always got along very well when we disagreed. And that's one thing that, you know, anybody that says we are of a like mind up here doesn't tune into Channel 15 very often, you know, because we do, and that's what we're paid to do, to disagree. So the one thing that I respect, because over the years, being on councils, that didn't get along as well, is that we do treat each other with respect and respect each other's, and there's not a lot of disrespect. So that's one thing I'd like to thank everybody for. And before I give the Law Director and the mayor a chance to speak, I also think we would be terribly remiss if we did not thank and compliment the one person that makes all of us look good, and that's Debbie Walker, our Clerk of Council, who I've now worked with for 20 years and have grown to love. Debbie, you are tremendous. Your expertise and institutional knowledge, when I say you make us look good, that's one of the biggest understatements around. So I do want you to know how much we appreciate you, and thanks for taking care of so much work for us and anticipating all of the problems you do for us and letting us know when we're going the wrong way. So Patrick, anything you'd like to add tonight? You're not being sworn in. You guys get off easy, four-year terms. It's a heck of a difference, isn't it?
It really is, and I don't feel like I've got a lot to add that can improve upon what's been said, other than just express my own personal congratulations to every member of the council for being returned, and to say how much I've enjoyed working with each and every one of you over the past two years, and how much I look forward to the next two.
Well, and you have been given a lot of challenges, a lot of unusual cases this year. You've had to learn a lot fast, and I am really glad you're sitting next to us here.
Thank you.
You're a great member of the team. Member Mayor Wile.[1240.48][1240.48][laughter]
I think it's mayor most of the time.
Yeah.
I look forward to working with everybody for the next two years. It's great. I like the open communication we have. I really cherish the input that you give me. After all, I can be as much myopic as anybody else and miss things. Again, a lot of you have worked very hard on various issues, whether it's the budget, which is going to be a monster, as everybody knows, looking at the economy. And I was having a discussion with somebody last week sometime. It talks about making changes, and they talk about, you know, the adage, breaking eggs to make an omelet. But being in the administration, I realize it's more than that. It's really, it's not brain surgery, but it's close to surgery, because you really have to keep the city alive and growing. It's not like a static clunk, the egg is cooked. It's actually a patient that you have to keep breathing and alive. We have a good team downstairs. We have a good set of employees throughout this city. I mean, if you think about it, 169, 170 employees. They keep the city running. They keep the roads open when it snows, which was fortunately minor this weekend. But the next thing is to look, you know, we have the day-to-day operations, we have the day-to-day problems, and I know you're aware of those things. And I look forward, I look to you to also look at the things in the future, what's going to happen in the future with us, the vision of where we want to go as a city. Energy issues from Alahu is, it's very important what we want to do, planning and development as well, how we want to end up our city to look like in 20 years or 10 years. I was looking at some ordinances from 1920, and I realized that what I'm signing, you know, everyone's going to want to be signing something, and I think, you know, this is going, somebody's going to be looking at that 80 years from now, and hopefully I'm making the right decision when I do that, because that's what we're doing, we're influencing the future. And I'm glad you, we've got a diversity of opinions here. I'm glad we have a lot of thought that's been put into the process of governance. And really, that's all I have to say. And again, anybody, any of the elected officials in here, I, you know, we all know what it takes to run and how, you know, our door is always open and our lives are an open book for everybody to deal with and to stop us and say, what about this and how this works? And that's part of being in a small city like this is, is we're accessible, we are able to listen, and we're able to respect each other as neighbors. That's all.
Is there anything anyone else would like to say? Kathy, city auditor.
She was joining the table. [unintelligible]. You caught me. I won't say very much. I just want to say congratulations and that I've enjoyed working with this council. Everyone has different opinions on things, and we've all been able to agree to disagree and work well together and be respectful. I'm often the bearer of bad news, no more money, et cetera, et cetera. The auditors want this, they want that. But everyone has jumped in, cooperated, and just really made my job easier, and I enjoy what I do. I look forward to working with the rest of you all again. Congratulations.
Thank you, Kathy. And we do have our state representative and former fourth Ward Council member, Debbie. Would you like to come up? Come on, you're an elected official. It's hard to not get a few words out of an elected official.[1460.71][1460.71][laughter]
We do have actual news. So first of all, congratulations to all of you, and thank you again for your willingness to serve the public and be part of this effort to wrestle with the issues of '18, which patches the hole in the budget that was caused by the court ruling related to the expansion of the Ohio Lottery. That would have created an $850 million hole in the education budget, which would have then triggered the loss of stimulus funds, which would have rippled through and triggered the loss of stimulus funds for higher education as well. So after several months of tough negotiations and three days that were at least 17 hours long each this past week, while we worked on the nuts and bolts of the negotiations, we were able to get that done and find a compromise and get that bill passed. The temporary delay in that final year of the income tax cut, freezing the state income tax levels at the 2008 level, will actually result in a slight increase in funds, because those, the state income tax does have a formula that funds flow through to local governments and to libraries. So I don't have specific projections for different local governments, but there should be at least a slight uptick in some of the revenues from the state to the city. So while they are very challenging times, there's a little, you know, hint of a ray of sunshine there as you're working on your budget and looking ahead at the services that the people here in Athens need. So it's great to see you. Thanks for serving.
Thank you, Representative Phillips. And now that the clock has clicked past 7:30, it's time to go into our regular session of Athens City Council. We do have a quorum with five members present. Next item on our agenda is the disposition of minutes from the regular session of council held November 16th, 2009. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the minutes of the session of November 16th.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Under communications, I do have one that I'd like to make everyone aware of, and this is from the Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control. If council remembers, several weeks ago, they voted to ask for a hearing regarding a new permit application, and this is for the CVS Pharmacy at 555 East State Street Road and the drive-in window. Now, the hearing is going to be held January 6th, 2010, at 11:00 a.m. at the Athens County Department of Job and Family Services, which is 13183 State Route 13 in Chauncey, Ohio. Interesting place to have the hearing. Now, we understand there may be a little bit of question, and our law director has agreed to see if he can find out. Are they truly going to be selling liquor out of the drive-through window, which is what we assumed from the permit application? Or does the drive-in window only mean that it is part of the address? So our law director is going to check into that, but at this point, January 6th, 2010, 11:00 a.m., Job and Family Services, Route 13 in Chauncey, is where the application, new permit application hearing will be held.
And I will see what I can find out about that, report back to council at the first regular meeting.
Off my desk, on yours.
Where's the first regular meeting?
It's the fourth, I believe.
So hopefully, we've got an answer to that if we can. Are there any other communications anyone wishes to share? Member Sands.
Mr. President, I would like to move that we accept the auditor's report for the month of November.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have accepted the auditor's report. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Let's go to Mayor Wile. Member Mayor Wile.
Really not much to report. Again, we had a snow this weekend. We had some trucks out, not a lot, because it really didn't do that badly, although I'm told up near Longview it was snowier than down in the valley here. You will note that we're now using a type of sand or pea gravel to replace those cinders, so you'll see a difference there. Just be aware of it. It doesn't look like it's melting, plus it's lighter in color. I received also today from the Census Bureau that they're going to have some kind of Portrait of America road tour, and this is going through Ohio. If I read their map correctly, it should, this is some kind of van, bus, PR stop for the Census 2010, and it should be coming through our area. It says January 19th, and I'm not sure where, since they didn't tell me where, but just so you have to be aware of the fact that they are, you know, again, making a lot of brouhaha about the Census, as they should. It looks like, it looks like a big blue truck. That's all I know, and it's a big blue truck. That's all I know, and it says...
So do we meet it and celebrate the Census?
I have no idea. I'll have to find out. All I know is, according to this map, it's going to be coming through some Cincinnati, maybe, I guess, or...
And we don't know exactly when, or...
Well, the 19th, but where and what part of the city, I couldn't tell you. Maybe it's just going to drive around, or maybe it's going to set itself up on Court Street for all I know. We'll find out.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Well, hey, we're down to those kind of communications. Tis that time of the year, huh? City auditor Kathy Heck.
No report.
City law director Patrick Lang.
No report.
Boy, and I'll tell you, when you look at this agenda, you can tell we have gotten to the time of the year where you can't start anything, because if we did, it would die when the new term of council starts. On to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 15009 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2010. Member Bain.
Mr. President, we've adopted option of 15009.
Second.
Last time we talked about this, I emphasized, in response probably to some criticism that we had heard, that we didn't have clear priorities, that this is indeed our statement of our clear priorities, that we have more than half devoted to the two main safety functions and then other functions that were also safety. And, but today I'd like to, as we're concluding, say that we are, it's no secret that we do have some future financial situations that are going to be a problem, but I think that we avoided at least some problems, or perhaps we're just waiting for the large bang, because of certain money-saving efforts that were, let's call them cooperative. Taking cars home ceased in many cases, a reduction of energy, and continues on to the future. Reorganization had a salutary effect, I think, and will have one, on our productivity as well as this. And we could go on and talk about vehicles, getting rid of the old, some of the old gas guzzlers and replacing them with new ones. And I think the list goes on. So as of right now, things are not perfect, but we do have a balanced budget. At least if things go the way we think, they'll go. It seems now that there's been a blink in the state senate that we will indeed not have the dire consequences, it seems so. That even drove me to the computer and I wrote a letter to the senate president asking him to be a statesman and got a response back before I even got out of it hardly. But I'm, so I'm not holding out great hope, but here we were, we got it. So we do have money-saving so as the featured item, and I'm sure Jim will have something else to say, but that's what I would like to feature this time.
Actually, I, I think your comments when, when this was introduced and your comments now are, are very representative of, of the whole budget, and I have nothing to add.
Does any other members of council? Mayor Wile.
As you know, since it's 01509, that's a nice even number, because we go back to this often, more than once in a year, many times more than once. So there will be...
You'll know that, you'll recognize that number next term.
Yes. Part of the thing, of course, is that what Nancy was talking about, we have tried reducing costs in terms of energy. We have a green fleets policy that's in place. We had, we switched our supplier for the city's gas supplier sometime earlier last year to, to see reductions. I need to go back and check that and make sure those gas supplies actually are reflected in the cost savings. Then, if you remember, the, the contract is good. It can be drop, as a drop dead date of 30 days, so we can actually fix that. We also have an RFP that went out for energy savings within all buildings of the city, so we'll have that rolling out sometime early in the year. So these are some of the cost savings we can look at. Again, if you look at the budget, realize that's a minor portion of it. Again, personnel's still 80% plus. That's going to be always a hard one to work with, just mostly in a general fund. We are going to be collaborating, Sherry and myself and Paul Logue, with one of the committee surveys classes, to look at surveys of what our needs will be, what kind of services are expected. I will actually float the idea out there, we may want to go approach the voters sometime in November for a tax increase, if not for the fire station, which of course the study's being done in terms of the locations, in terms of time, distance, for response times, but also other activities like a fund line for the bus system, which I think is very important for a city. I don't think any city that's worth its name does not have a public transit component within itself. It always costs us a little bit of money, almost all bus systems do, from what I understand. The idea is, do we want to fund, finance that just haphazardly through the budget, or do we start trying to look at a fund line on that? One of the other issues that, in discussion about the survey, of course, would be looking at a pool situation, too. But these are things that are going to come up, or we'll still chase grants, which means the budget will change as that goes on, too. We still have grants that aren't even recorded in here, because the certified resources, resources haven't been awarded yet. And that's really, I have to say, it's a lot of work. There are pieces missing in it, just because of the way it's set up and the numbers, but we'll get there.
And it does represent about 30 million, 31 million, I think we passed this year.
Mm-hmm.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 150?
Just, in response, I just wanted to say one thing about something that I know Ray was concerned about, and that was the internship, and I think you're, we're waiting to see how things sort out, right? And so we'll be moving to amend 15009 fairly quickly, but we're, you left it at status quo, and you may have to change it, right?
Actually, I did not put this, the...
You did not put them in, okay.
I did not put interns in some of the departments. Some of the seasonals are missing. Some departments do have it. When I started doing, whacking out general parts of the general fund, those were one of the first things I went.
So that one is to be continued. I just want to make sure everyone knew that we weren't quite through yet.
Ordnance 150 is a living document. Yes, city auditor Kathy Heck.
I was just going to comment, let you know that last year's budget ordinance was 013008, so you guys have been busy this year.
I was thinking we were short on numbers. Did we not pass 160 before?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, in fact, when I saw 150 and 151, and we're ending the year, and I'm thinking, I remember seeing 165 before. Wonder what we didn't do this year. We may figure that one out before long, but anyway. Okay. Is there further discussion on ordinance 150? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 15109 is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 15009.
Second.
As we've talked about many times in the past, we all know that the city is self-insured for, for our health insurance for all of our employees. And as one way of protecting the city from very expensive claims, we, we enter into a contract for stop-loss insurance, meaning that when a claim reaches a certain level, the, the other insurance company steps in. And recently, the Personnel Director received quotes from three companies who deal in stop-loss, and at her recommendation, we are recommending that we renew our contract with a company called BP Incorporated for stop-loss insurance for the next, next term of the insurance.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 151? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. And that seems to be the last ordinance for this term of council. Announcements and other business. Mayor Wile.
You are having an inspection of the fire station the ninth, I believe? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, and that's going to be a full public hearing, or, I mean, it's going to be a quorum of city council. Everybody's going to show up?
Oh, I certainly hope so.
Okay.
Let's make sure we send out an email reminding all council members to get that on their agenda. And on the ninth, at what time are we doing that? Do we have a...
Nine o'clock.
9:00 a.m.?
Station 2, 9:00.
Since that is a...
Station 2, 9:00.
Public meeting of council. Anyone is welcome to join us. So are we meeting here in front of City Hall, or are we going straight to...
It's your, it's your show, isn't it?
I, I propose that we meet in front of City Hall.
That means you've got to get us transportation there.
Okay.
You know, that bus system you like so well?
Yeah, we can't be your bus, I guess.
Well, the only other announcement I'd like to make is that the next meeting of council will be the 4th of January, where we will start discussing. And we're honored to be the ones that discuss the business before the city of Athens again for another term. The last item on our agenda before adjournment is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Come on. You're always here, you never say anything. Seeing no one wishing to do so and having addressed all items on our agenda tonight, we stand adjourned.